Uh, can I get a roll call please, Brittany?
Mayor Parton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gore. Counselor Denton.
Yes, here.
Counselor Pellon.
Here.
Counselor Holloway.
Here.
Counselor Joyner. Counselor Harris.
Here.
You have a call.
Okay, um, I know Counselor Joyner called and said she was going to participate remotely. Is she on yet?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm participating remotely.
Okay, uh, can you state for the record where you would like to, or where you're conducting the meeting from?
Sure, I'm at my home, uh, 711 Francis Street in Ward One, and, um, it's for medical reasons.
Okay, alright, do I have a motion to allow Counselor Joyner to participate remotely?
So moved.
Check it.
Okay, motion's been made by Counselor Holloway and seconded by Counselor Harris. Is there any discussion? See and none, roll call please.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Pellon.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, alright, we will start with R1.
Alright, good evening, Mayor, members of council, City Manager Maker. This is the August Finance Committee meeting. Next slide, please. So we're going to do an overview of the budget to actuals for July and August. Citywide, thank you. Citywide for July and August is trending .57% higher in revenues for 25 over 20 versus 24. Expenses for July and August are trending .
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yes ma'am.
What sheet are you paying for?
Do you have an agenda? We don't have it.
Don't have any copies.
Just tell me what sheet you're reading out there. Oh, okay. Too much technology. Thank you.
Alright, yes ma'am, expenses for July and August are trending .59% higher for 25 versus 24. Overall, we are trending 5.56% or 11.4 million less than we should be for August. The city should be at 16% or $34.1 million. Next slide, please. This is the detail for the revenues over expenditures. Excuse me, as you can see, the far right corner where it says, um, projected is 11.1. We should really be at 16% because we are in the first, um, two months of the fiscal year. I also provided a, um, comments as far as the revenues and the increases or decreases for 24 versus 25. For real estate is, um, increased more than 24 due to past due collections. For personal property taxes, there's a slight decrease due to, due to collections. Um, machinery and tools, a reclass of 3.2 happened in 24, but earned in 23, a decrease is due to collections. PPTRA is pretty consistent, that's a set amount that comes from the state for personal property relief. Other taxes, decreased due to other taxes to include business license, vehicle license, communication, recreation, food, lodging, meal tax, et cetera. Use of property and money, there's a decrease due to interest income received. Charges for services, miscellaneous revenues consist of sewer, I'm sorry, charges for services, yes. Miscellaneous revenue consists of miscellaneous revenue, which is sewer, refuse, schools, courts, sheriff, EMS, SS, which is social services, recreation, slight decrease. Increase due to past due collections for penalties and interest. There are variable revenues, which is fines and forfeitures, permits, fees and license, grants, of course. We have state revenue is the decrease in timing for school funding received. Federal reserve, uh, revenues is a decrease due to ARPA that was used in 24. So of course, you know, we're not going to receive any additional ARPA funding for, from the federal government. Miscellaneous revenue is an increase due to HRW revenues. In lieu of taxes is consistent. Debt services decrease for debt payments, as you had some bonds removed, you'll have some additional, uh, payments that are being removed at the end of 24, uh, as well. Transfers in slight increase for transfer to other funds. Okay, next slide, please. General fund budget to actuals for July and August, general fund for July and August is trending .84% or 193,000 lower in revenues for 25 versus 24. Expenses for 25 are trending 1.3% or 160,000 higher than 24. The same concept applies for the general fund and the city should be at roughly 16.6% or 11.4 million in revenues. The key due dates for the city of Hopewell are December, February, and June, which are your real estate, uh, personal property, February, and then June, uh, the second half of real estate. Next slide, please. The next slide shows the detailed breakdown for real estate, um, the revenue types, uh, for revenue expenditures, fiscal year 24 over 25 and percentage. Next slide, please.
I mean, can you say that again, I'm sorry?
Yes ma'am, I'm sorry.
Are we a real estate collection? I can't.
Well, you're really not going to see a big, uh, um, the real estate as of yet because your first due date isn't until December. Yes ma'am, so when we come back in September, it'll be the end of the first quarter, but we'll really be able to see how truly we're trending for the fiscal year come December when your first due dates come in.
Okay, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
It's expenditure, oh, so you just balance expenditures below that, right?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Are you saying that these expenditures below the rev, real estate taxes pay for these things?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, so the services that are pro, provided by the city, the residents, are, are paid for by taxes that we receive, federal, state funds, permits, fees, grants.
And those are annual numbers, right?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Those are annual numbers, like, for the entire fiscal year, correct?
Yeah, so far, this is, so you have 24 on the left side and you have 25 for July and August on the right.
Okay.
Yes ma'am. Next slide, please, thank you. Enterprise fund budget to actuals July and August, enterprise fund for July and August is trending .89% or 158,000 more in revenues for 25 versus 24. Expenses for 25 are trending 2.8% or 574,000 less than expenses in 24. And the same concept applies for enterprise fund, the actual, the same concept applies for each of the funds that the city maintains. Okay, next slide, please. This is the breakdown for the enterprise fund for July and August. Again, we have the revenues at the top, we have the expenditures at the bottom, on the left side would be fiscal year 24 and the right side is fiscal year 25. I'm sorry? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
A little bit.
What enterprise fund?
That would be sewer, stormwater, uh, sewer, refuse, those are our enterprise funds. Schools, schools is trending .92% or 1.1 million more in revenues for 25 versus 24. Expenses are trending .10% or 578,000 more in fiscal year 25 versus 24. And again, the same concept applies for schools. This will be the detail for the school systems, the revenues at the top, expenditures at the bottom. Remember, we also added back in the transfers in for the monies that the, the city sends to the school system to see how much has been transferred thus far. On the left side is the 24 figures, on the right side is 25. This is an overview, again, of the preliminary general fund figures for 24. The general fund surplus of 7.1 should be used to ensure the funding for the new financial reserve policies that we're going to review again tonight to be adopted next, at next week's council meeting, which will be for the Reserve Budget Stabilization and Capital Fund. Reserving initiatives also for capital projects, currently the city has $4 million, that's unfunded in capital. An additional personnel need, personnel needs, excuse me, implementation of class and comp study, enhancement of public safety and city stabilization. The needs of the city of Hopewell greatly outweigh the revenues that are currently being received. The city is heading in the right direction. It's not going to be an overnight process, but it's going to take participation from not only the departments, but residents as well as council. I also broke out the detail for 24 versus 23, as, just so that council can understand where the increase came from, from fiscal year 23 versus 24, and 24-year actuals were 62.4 million. In 24, they were 69.7. Majority of the increases comes from additional billing for real estate as well as, um, public service. Personal property is pretty much across the board, but there is increase in collections as well. Uh, there was also an increase in penalties and interest, of course, when you increase collections, permits and fees. Some of these are variables, they are noted as such, a variable revenue means that it's pretty much based off of what they bill out, for instance, like the permits or any kind of sheriff fees, police fees, uh, fines, fines and forfeiture, so those can vary year over year, okay?
Good question.
Yes ma'am.
Do all your court fines go into our general fund or do they keep, the court has some way of keeping?
They go into the general fund, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
So for fiscal year 25, we have already started to spend some of the surplus from 24. 1.2 went to Churchill, of course, and there are some other initiatives that, um, City Ma, City Manager Maker had supplied to council at the last meeting in regards to, um, some additional personnel that was needed within the city, economic development opportunities, um, again Churchill Fire Generator, Public Schools, implement, um, implementation of the ERP system, they're going to Munis, legal firm search. So that would take our figures for 24 down to 5.5 million in surplus.
Are you going to explain this sheet later again?
What sheet?
Finished?
Yes.
I just wanted to do a quick overview on, uh, budget rating and understanding what that means. We know that the city, once we receive our annual comprehensive financial reports back for the prop, the outstanding fiscal years, we have a plan to go forward towards de-credit rating agencies to receive a bond rating for the city of Hopewell so that we have opportunity to start refinancing some of our debt as well as receive a bond rating. Excuse me, there are three national rating agencies, which is Moody's, S&amp;P, and Finch. They all measure different, um, things within the organization as far as management and policies go. For Moody's, their major impacts will be fund balance policies, mid, multi-year financial and capital planning, liquidity management, accuracy of budget forecasting, and willingness to make mid-year adjustments, as well as no, using one-shot revenues. So S&amp;P would measure revenue and expenditures assumptions, budget amendments and updates, long-term financial planning as well as capital planning, investment management policies, which is also included in the financial policies that we review tonight and that we would like to adopt next, um, council meeting. Debt management policies, which is also included in your financial policies as well as reserve and liquidity, liquidity policies, which is also included in the financial policies. There is criteria for accomplishing a bond rating or path forward. Again, we plan to work with that report once we receive all of the past due annual reports and have, um, a meeting with the credit rating agency so that the city of Hopewell is able to receive an initial bond rating. Some of the, some of the factors that can contribute to a decrease in a bond rating is decline in reserves and liquidity levels, a tax-based deterioration or lack thereof, significant increases in debt or long-term liabilities. Increases that can contribute to a higher bond rating would be maintaining reserves and liquidity levels, a tax-based growth and diversification, as well as strengthening median household income because, believe it or not, that does play a, a role in credit rating agencies issuing a credit rating, the household median of the city residents. Okay? S&amp;P rating is based on the following criteria, credit overview, is the city's financial position improving? Is there a weak economy, strong budgetary performance with a surplus, which we did in 24? So that's always a good thing, that's something that the credit agents will be looking at. Strong budgetary flexibility, strong liquidity, and strong debt and contingent liability profile, which the city also has. Okay? So some of the issues for, uh, some of the items for October that we will bring back to the Finance Committee next week. We're still looking at a sewer rate study, we will present the HRW true-ups analysis for 24, as well as, um, we're hoping to be able to provide an update on the 21 to 24 ACFRs. Are there any questions on this piece?
Are there any questions from City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Would you like to, um, handle the policies glass after we hear from all the departments? Um, because I think that would take up most of the discussion today.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Alright.
I got a question. On, uh, you don't have unfortunate, next time when you do the slides, do you mind just having them numbered?
Sure, absolutely.
It's on the general fund fiscal year 25 budget to actuals July and August, uh, slide. You mentioned in here that we're trending, you know, .84% or 193,000 lower in revenues for fiscal year 25 versus 24, and that expenses are trending upwards. Now, I know that, you know, these two months, you know, aren't, you know, big revenue months for us. Is, you know, that one of the reasons why, or is there something else that we should be concerned about? We should start looking at to, in order to, I guess, you know, try to be more proactive? Like, I mean, do we need to, you know, slow down spending?
No, we just need to continue to keep monitoring spending, so I'll be looking at that every month and then I'll report it to council in the Finance Committee to see how we're trying to move it forward. The telltale thing is going to be come December, again, when you hit that big first half of your revenue to see, uh, for real estate, to see where we're at, at that point. But we're constantly monitoring the revenues and, as well as working with the treasurer's office to monitor cash flow to ensure that the city stays above a certain level on the bank account.
Okay. Any other questions? Uh, Counselor Holloway?
I'm, I'm still on the same thing that the mayor is speaking on. I understand that we're monitoring it, so are we not concerned because even though the expenditures and revenue, the revenue is under the expenditures, we still have enough money in the bank from the prior months?
Yes, and then like I said, again, for Hopewell, you have from July to December, really, to maintain a specific amount of money in the bank account so we can make sure that we're meeting payroll, paying the vendors, and, and continue with operations. You really don't have a, a due date until December. Some localities will have a due date in September, so you'd have one quarter where you're make, you know, you're bringing in consistent revenues, unlike, Hopewell isn't set up that way. You know, you have two times a year you pay real estate and only once a year you receive personal property, which are your biggest, is, uh, that's how, the most revenue that you receive for the fiscal year. So we're going to continue to keep monitoring, like I said, and come December, we'll be able to clearly see where we are. But we are keeping track on the revenue, of the expenses to make sure that we're not overspending.
Okay, thank you so very much.
Yes, you're welcome.
Okay. Alright, I don't have any other questions?
Thank you.
R2. Ms. Foskey?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Alright, I, uh, oh, you need a PowerPoint, okay, you guys have a PowerPoint, okay. Alright, I'm going to go ahead and go through, I can, can I email it to you or it's fine? It's, no, no worries, we'll just move forward. Is it? Yes, sir.
It's the blue.
Yes, the blue.
No, we have.
No, we have, of course. Okay, so I am coming to deliver the delinquencies for personal property, real estate, machinery and tools, public service, as well as the business licenses, as well as what we have billed out, that didn't work well with our commission revenue office to get what we have billed out, what we have collected, as well as what is still, um, delinquent at this time. We can definitely start at personal property. For 2019 to 2022, as mentioned, the personal property is currently with TACS. Um, right now, we have, well, as of last month when I reported it, we reported $3,842,655.82. If you go to the next slide, slide seven, um, 2019 to 2022, now, as of today, the amount is $3,015,565.99. Next slide. I have included just the snippet of the 2022 and 2023 assessment value that we did get from our commissioner and what we originally billed for the commissioner, so you guys will be able to see the original billed amount. Um, and I am on slide number eight. Personal property, for, for just the personal property on its own, we, the total tax was $6,828,215.25. And then if we specify the public service and machinery and tools, you will be able to see what was originally billed for those particulars, um, tax. If we move to the next slide, I have.
This is an insert different from what in the fact from the.
Well, the ins, well, what should happen, the insert is the full, the full years, but if we're just following the, the PowerPoint on page five, I'm, I'm sorry, page eight, you'll be able to see a snippet of 2022 and 2023. Okay, I'm sorry, so this is from Ms. Reason, so the inserts was from Ms. Reason. I had only provided the PowerPoint, can I see what you have?
Something you've printed.
Okay, so you. Okay, so it's from Ms. Reason, Ms. Reason will be able to explain it part to you guys. And it's basically the assessment values of everything that, it's basically from 2021 to 2024. She's giving you the assessment values of what I'm speaking about. Okay, so page nine, um, I've, I have broken down personal property from 2022 and 2023 as requested from, um, Ms. Gore, our last meeting, and I broke down the 2022 to 2023 as far as what was billed, what we have collected, and what is currently delinquent. What's currently delinquent at this time, just keep in mind, 2022 on back, or 2022, 21, 20, 20, and 19 is currently with TACS. 2023 is currently in-house at this time. And what we've, we are going to make a decision on sending those particular vehicles to Virginia Auction, and they will be putting boots on the 2023 vehicles, um, starting in October. This will bring the action to the city and they will understand that moving forward, we have to continue with making sure that the taxes are being paid. Yes, 2022 on back is with TACS, but what TACS is currently doing at this time is basically, um, sending out like, um, garnishments and taking the monies out of the accounts from the citizens. If we move forward with 2023 with the boots, this will perfectly help with the revenue coming in and bring the action as far as they see that we're, um, putting the action out there.
Foskey, what is the notice is we about the need of October, for example?
Oh, I'm sorry, by the end of October, I'm sorry, by the end of October, guys, I do a bad mind about that.
And this boot situation?
Yes.
So, uh, this is my first time hearing about that part, I know early on, what was it, uh, I think early on this year, or maybe the end of last year, discussing different, uh, things that the office would be doing to collect the taxes. This boot thing is throwing me off, so I know that we are, um, we got liens, uh, DMV and.
So we already have the DMV already in place, so.
I know that, that's what I'm saying, I'm, I'm familiar with those.
Yes.
How and when did this thing, is this the city code?
No, that's not the city code, this, the treasurer, the treasurer can go out and collect however she needs.
Correct, correct.
Um, in that case, this decision was made two, three months ago with me and my staff, where we're going to go ahead and make another collection method in, and that will be in regards of boots. Uh, we were going, I'm sorry.
So, my question with that is, how's this working? Because when you were speaking a few moments ago, you were saying that they'd go to the auction and put on boots. So are you, are we, is the city financing, um, tow trucks?
Yeah, so that's a good question, it's a very good question. So I originally had went to the chief because to my understanding, they have an impound that we will be able to perfectly, uh, partner with them to be able to do this. And I was going to get a vendor, um, one of the vendors, Wayne Taylor, he was going to go out and help us with the boots. Now, Virginia Auction, at this point, Virginia Auction currently now is with, is collecting for our businesses out there, and they're actually going out and putting, see, um, giving seizure notices out to those ones that are delinquent. And also, they're, um, they're helping with the non-judicials with, with Jason Dunn. So when I had a meeting with them two or three months ago, um, they brought it to our attention that they can also do the boots on the vehicles. So I truly believe that that's a, a great idea, um, to be able to, and, and, and not going out there fully off, like, I would say in October, we will do, um, the top 10, um, people that is, that actually is delinquent, and then we'll go from there. But Virginia Auction, to answer your question, they will charge the citizen for any additional charges. So for example, the 20% that they will charge for collections, as well as, I believe it's an additional $30 that the citizen will pay, so it will be nothing that we will, it will come out the city's pocket.
Alright, and all, all actual, if somebody hasn't paid the, the, their taxes, I'm, I'm guessing that they wouldn't be having this money. How, are there arrangements made on this? It's just, it's concerning me with citizens if somebody hasn't been able to pay.
I understand, that's very.
Those who refuse to pay, which.
Yeah, and it's a lot of them that refuse to pay. It's a whole lot of them, that's where, that's actually refusing to pay because we do have the option for them to come in and do a payment arrangement for these particular, um, these particular delinquencies for 2023. In-house, we have a payment arrangement and they, they have a certain amount of time to fulfill it. If they don't fulfill it or skip it or vice versa, we will put the DMV stop right on it and then they'll have to, um, move forward that way.
And then my, then my last concern, hopefully is explained correctly. When this is done, you, you made a statement about going after the first, the 10 top accounts. Is that something that will become a discriminatory, uh, suit, seeing that it seems as if, hey, I'm just choosing to go after these people and not these people? There's nothing that overall makes you go out, you know, after everyone?
Well, we will eventually go after everyone. For example, when we get to the businesses, I'm going to start with the top 10 that are delinquent as well. And I will go ahead, um, by October, we will be in the field, going out, letting them see my face and saying, hey, you are delinquent if you don't pay before 72 hours, then this is what we're going to do. And the next step is auctioning out their property or their, their belongings, that's it.
So you're giving people 72 hours to make a payment?
We've been reaching out to these people for two, for, since I've been in here. We've been reaching out to these people for two, for since I've been in here. And, and I've been reaching out to them, sending letters and everything. So now, yes, we just got Virginia Auction two or three months ago, and they have been going out and again, doing the seizures, putting out seizure letters, saying, hey, if you don't, you have to pay this certain amount. And now, now what is the next step after that? So now, they have already went out and say, you owe the treasurer's office, you have to pay. Now what's the next step?
So at that point, they can make payment arrangements or no?
They can make payment arrangement, they can come in and make payment arrangements, but do they? No.
No, yeah, I, 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 I am fully with you, uh, you know, to, to, to do what's necessary. Um, for the people who just refuse, it's just, I'm thinking for the people who may not be able to afford it at that one time. So I think that.
They could come and make payment arrangements.
And like you said, you've done everything prior to this point. So, you know, going to the next step is, is definitely, uh, um, so I appreciate that, thank you.
So they are what, so they are aware that they, the boot will be implemented, that boot program will be implemented, you tell them?
That's already been noticed?
As far as the.
The auction people have told the people, the next step is your car will be impounded wherever they find it.
Yes.
With the boot, they know that.
Well, wait, we haven't, no, so no. I have not sent out letters or anything to the citizens, letting them know about, anything about any boots yet, yet. I'm just letting you guys know that this is what we are discussing.
That's my, that's what I'm saying. So I, I don't think it's, it's proper, uh, to only be given a seventy-two hour notice, I think prior to that, even like we.
Well, we're talking about two different things now, we're talking about the boots, and we're talking about the, um, the businesses. So the boots, we've already sent out letters and notices and all kinds of, um, collection scares, saying, hey, legal matters will, um, you know, will, will pursue further if this doesn't happen. So we've already done that. So this, that, the boots issue, we can go ahead and move forward with. But as far as the businesses.
You told them you were gonna pursue a legal issue, did you tell them you were gonna pursue impounding their car?
That's, that's in, that's in a delinquent notice?
That's in a delinquent notice, that car will be booted.
Impound is in the, in there.
Impound, that's the same thing, okay, but they know.
That's good, that's, that's all I was thinking, sure that that was, something was a notice. I just don't want us to be in the.
I understand.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's perfect, thank you.
All right, next. All right, so we have machinery and tools, and as we know, machinery and tools is the big portion of our, um, revenue that comes into the city. Um, with machinery and tools, as you see, I have given you the billed amount, the two thousand twenty-three, as well as the two thousand twenty-four. Um, I've given you as far as what we have collected. And as you see, we, we, we have a really, um, good collection rate when it comes down to machinery and tools. They pay on time, they pay when they need to pay. Um, so we don't have any delinquencies for two thousand twenty-two or two thousand twenty-three for machinery and tools. Now for two thousand twenty-four, um, keep in mind, we have the first half, which is June the fifth, and then we have our second half, it's December, um, hold on, sorry, June, um, June the fifteenth, and then December the fifth, I do apologize. And the first half is already in. Right now, for delinquencies, we have one machinery and tools that's currently delinquent, and I have listed it there and how much it is. Um, what we have done, we've already sent out a letter advising the company, and we will send out another letter. But what will happen, um, this particular machinery and tools will also go to TACS if they don't pay it by a certain time. And next slide, please. Any questions about that slide?
Yes. So you don't have to write out, you don't have to write out as to the difference of what's, what's been billed and what's collected for that slide for the machinery and tools?
What was billed for two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three? And then for two thousand twenty-four, I gave you the full of machinery and tools for the full year and the first half of two thousand twenty-four. And then for collected for two thousand twenty-four, I give you the first half, what we have collected, and see that we've collected six million, nine hundred, ten dollars.
So I was saying, you, you don't have the difference written out, you gotta calculate that too.
Oh. You want, what, you want me to give you the difference between what was collect, I mean, I mean.
Yeah, next time, you know, so, so when, when you have it up there, you got what was billed, what's collected, and then we'll know what, what's owed to the city, what needs to be.
I give, I have, it's here. So if we're just looking at two thousand twenty-four by itself, the full year is ten thousand, three hundred, forty thousand.
Ten million?
Oh, ten, I'm sorry, ten million, I'm sorry, ten million, three hundred four, forty thousand, forty-six dollars and thirty-three cent. The first half is five million, one hundred seventy, right? Okay, so we look at collected for two thousand twenty-four, we've collected for the first half, six million, nine hundred, ten thousand, seven hundred sixty-eight dollars and eight cent. We've collected a little bit more than what the first half is. It's because some of the machinery and tools has already paid for first half and second half. So when we look at the, um, the spreadsheet here, you will see that for, the only thing that is delinquent for the first half is what I have here, is Kenzie LLC, which is twenty-five, um, twenty-five thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand.
Right, I don't, I don't think you understand. So it says, this is what we billed, and then we have, this is what we collected. And I was saying, the next time, can you put, like you were saying, we, we collected more than expected for the first half.
Okay, so you want me to give you a number of what, okay, what, what we, okay.
If, if, say if it was in the opposite, say we came short, and it, and instead of collecting the five million, one hundred and seventy thousand.
I understand.
We collected forty, yeah, four million.
Okay. Okay, next. Okay, so we have public service, and the same concept, we've been stating, um, we don't have any issues with public service being paid on time. As you see, we have what was billed, what was collected, I understand. Well, in this case, it will, it would be zero, so you, that's. But I understand you, if it was a shortage or over, if you want me to put that amount. Okay. Any questions about that slide? All right, next, we have, um, the TACS. And I've, you guys have seen this, so basically, every week, the TACS group will send us basically what they have been collecting for us. And keep in mind, again, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two is currently with TACS. Um, since our last report to today's date, we've, they have collected forty-two thousand, six hundred, two dollars and twenty-five cent. And any questions about this slide? Okay, next slide is business licenses. Now, with the way the reporting is, it does not give, and Ms. Reason, if you can help me on this, please. Um, I, when I pull the report that I have, I cannot distinguish between the business licenses and the meal tax. I can go through the report and, and take those ones that I know that are restaurants, but I don't have a list of all of the businesses and all of the, the meal tax. So I have collectively what I have, is what we have billed overall, what we have collected, and what is currently delinquent at this time for the business license. Now, there is a way, I am gonna work with Ms. Reason and her team, as well as, um, Munis, to see if they can help me pull the report, so I can distinguish between the two. Yeah, I have, I did, I grabbed those numbers and put it on the report. It's just the breakdown on my side.
Okay.
Any questions? All right, so the next couple of slides is just basically repetitive from the past. Virginia Auction, remember, they are the ones that are going out and seizing those particular properties. They have not done any more from the last time that I've been up here. Um, so we can definitely keep moving, I'm on page twenty-one, and we're moving on to the real estate. Okay, so for real estate, as we mentioned, two, um, two thousand and four through two thousand and twenty-four, I did give you guys the overall, what is delinquent at this time, which is a million, nine hundred five, nine hundred two dollars and fifty-three cent. If we move on to the next slide, I have broken down as far as two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, and two thousand twenty-four. I've, I've retrieved the information for the billed from our real estate assessor office, and I've gathered what has, what we have collected for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, and what is currently delinquent. The delinquencies at this time for two thousand twenty-four, as mentioned in the last meeting, we did send out over eight hundred notices advising the citizens that they can, they can make payment arrangements, and they have until November of this year to avoid going to Jason Dunn, which is our current collection attorney, um, which he is basically doing an awesome job with collecting, um, our funds at this time. The next few pages, again, is repetitive from the past, couple of meetings that we have had. I did not put one thing and actually have it on the screen. Um, there, I, we are developing a SOP or some type of policies, so we can all be on the same page of how we should be communicating together um, in regards of when there is a question or inquiry, when it comes down to the citizen, um, allowing the treasurer to be involved in the inquiries that you guys have asking, when I, when I state as far as going outside to our collection attorneys, um, making sure that the treasurer is aware of that. So I do have a SOP that I have, but I'm not gonna present it just yet, I would like to present it our next time. Um, I have a, we have a situation, but it's not a situation. Ms. Denton, I would like to, I guess, schedule a meeting with you, um, coming up, so we can discuss the, the property that you are inquiring in, um, with Jason Dunn. I don't wanna state it here, but I would like to have a one-on-one with you, so we can definitely work together to see how we can address this for the citizen.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Any questions? All right, guys, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Dr. Manaker?
Uh, Commissioner, Ms. Reason. Do, do you have any presentations?
No, I just did the printout.
The printout, did, do you, is council, would council like to go over the printout?
Not the request from you, you talking about that other printout? No.
No, you understand?
Okay.
As far as the one delinquency that we have on machinery and tools, they did file a appeal with the Commissioner Revenue, so that was put into hold. As soon as they got the appeal to me, I responded, and I denied their allegations. So that is something for us to, I'll, I'll keep you informed.
Of course.
But that is why they haven't paid.
Okay, uh, Council Holloway?
Wait, so the, the appeal turns around, the, the letters are from you, and then the appeal goes back to you?
Yes. They appealed to the Commissioner of Revenue for their assessment, and then I deny it, or we adjust filling accordingly, but if not, I just go ahead and deny it. It's a very long process. Um, I have copied Dr. Manaker on everything going on, so she's aware of it. Um, it's just a courtesy for me to let everybody know at this point. And hopefully, we need no attorneys, 'cause I tried to do it myself. Okay? Anyone have any questions?
Thank you for all your hard work.
Okay, before we move on to the financial policies, I would just like to say, the financial policies were emailed on Friday. Hopefully, council got an opportunity to take a look at it. Um, the CFO will just be requesting whether or not you have any questions or, or over any particular policy that you would like to review or go over. They have been presented before by Russ, um, back in, um, August as well. And so they're, they're here tonight, so we will be asking for action next Tuesday at the council meeting, um, for adoption. So this will be the opportunity for us to dive into any particular policy that you have questions over. But prior, before we go into that, I would just like to go over the request worksheet. There are two outstanding questions that came from Council of Pelham that we'd like to answer at this meeting tonight. The first question was, um, so two meetings ago, you were presented with a, um, request to utilize, um, uh, it says findings from operating budget from two thousand twenty-four, and so I gave you a breakdown of what those requests are.
What sheet you reading from?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so on the front, you're on the front now?
Yes, ma'am, on the front.
Okay.
And so you have a breakdown of those requests.
Well, how did the marina get in here?
Yeah, that's what I.
Well, they, it's been there from the original, it's just, it's just outstanding requests. These are requests, they have not, it's for council consideration, they have not been honored, okay? They're, they're just on the sheet for you to review of what those requests are.
Uh, what, what, what is these, uh, what are these, uh, arena repair costs? Because it was my understanding when we went through all of that, uh, changing the prices and so forth, which, when I, um, met with Mr.
Mr. Bennett.
Bennett later, he was telling me to the positive, we have gone beyond his expectation.
Right, so tho, those are, so only half of the marina has, uh, where we have tenants. The other half is deemed, um, unavailable to anybody to rent out.
Right, that was in, that was still, that was still included in the, in his presentation, because I asked him that during the presentation very specifically, and he explained the total cost of it all.
Right.
And then he said only half of it is gonna be.
If he could rent them all out at once, but he's not able to, because half of the marina needs repairs.
That's correct. Again, in that meeting, if you go back and look at it, he had already explained that.
Okay.
He explained the total cost of the cost for the entire fix, and he also calculated the cost of what he could rent out, because he specifically said he couldn't rent out a portion of it.
Gotcha.
So what I'm trying to see here is where these costs are. It, this seems like it would be an overlap still of those costs.
No, he, he, so his, what he is requesting is more or less of a loan from the city to go ahead and make those repairs. If he were to continue with renting out the half of the marina as he is currently doing right now, it will take ten, twelve years to, to generate the cost.
Right.
To repair it. This way, if he could get the, the dollars upfront, he can repair it, rent out the remaining slips, and generate that money back quicker. So it's, it's kinda like paying yourself back, and he's asking the city, you know, this, the, this is the cost for those repairs, and if he can rent that, that section out sooner, he can generate these dollars back, he can get. He can get, get these dollars back into the city's coffers.
That, that, that seems like a, uh, I'm giggling, because you know very well, when he did this presentation, I broke all of this down and said all of that very specifically that night. And I, 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 I even tried to encourage council to utilize the money from the, uh, ARPA fundings for that purpose and so forth, so we wouldn't be snatching money as a request, like even, I think council didn't was speaking on it. Because we, every, we want, you know, the, everybody that comes in here speaks to the Marina. It's one of our, you know, the, the, the best attractions that we have here, so of course, we want that thing taken care of. But to, that's a gross amount. That's a large amount of money to say, hey, let's go ahead and prove it, when it was such a big fight to say we increased, we increased that cost for this exact purpose. Now we're coming back and saying we're going to pay for it, you know?
He, it, it can be paid with the increased amount, but what I think we're missing is that we're only getting half of those dollars, because the remain, the other half of the Marina is not rented.
No, 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 Dr. Maker. If, if, if you go back and look at that night, he gave the numbers of what we would get for renting that amount, and I kept on looking at the simple fact like, ooh, ten years? So, the, the whole purpose of that increase was to fix the Marina. And, and he kept on saying, even in between time, there will be grants and so forth, that they will be going after and so forth. So why are we not going towards the grant direction versus?
Well, he is going towards the rent. He, there, he's currently looking for additional grants. But you're absolutely right. Those dollars, increase in dollars, were on the assumption that all of the boat slips would be rented. Right now, we only have half of them rented, so you're not getting all the funds. Even with the increase, you're not getting all those funds. And so it's going to take an extremely long time to, with only half of the, the boat slips rented out, extremely long time to muster up the money to fix the repairs.
So where are we expecting to pull these funds from?
Well, these are requests, okay? The council, the council has to decide if this is even a project that they want to pursue. That, that's why it's here.
Oh, so, so, so this request would be from year-end statement?
Yes.
Okay, well.
Okay, so let's, let's walk through it, uh, really quickly, so we can get to the financial policies. So, there was a request for administrative legal assistant, uh, from the city's attorney's office. There was a cold case attorney request from the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, a paralegal from the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, a ERP administrator, which is a, a Robert Bob group recommendation, economic development specialist, which is also a Robert Bob group recommendation. And then you have specific departments requests. Uh, economic development, the purchase of the property in one, um, eleven hundred oh one Maple Drive, and then the re- Marina request, and those totals are six hundred and four thousand dollars. There is the fire generator, which is two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That's a grant match. It's, uh, been approved a year ago, and so the, 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 um, federal government is just getting around to awarding those dollars, and so the city, um, has already, you know, approved having a city generator. The generator that we have currently is about sixty-five years old, and it was a hand-me-down. So it's really important that the municipal building have a generator in case we are without, um, the electricity. We have a lot of things that run off the generator. The back room behind us are all police equipment. And so when we have some kind of electrical failure here, we have to call over to our neighbor municipalities to help run all emergency management. And so, as you know, just a month ago, or two months ago, we had a emergency power outage as well. And so, um, you know, we have a sixty-five-year-old generator. That's just where we are.
I have a quick question. The, uh, I can't remember if it was a tour that we had did, I think it was Councilor Joyner and I had did. I don't know if it was wastewater or, um, wastewater or, um, American water, but they had a huge generator there, and I think it was wastewater.
Mine.
A big generator, because they bought a new one, and they said they were planning on selling the other, other one, which was in neat condition. It's just that it didn't run the entire, uh, facility.
It, it was a wastewater, um, because I wouldn't kind of really know about that. It may have been American water.
Okay.
Um, Public Works, the Whiston Churchill repairs, um, Hopewell Public Schools with the, um, Munis repairs, and then the legal search firm, um, that was added at the last minute, uh, at the last meeting. If you turn over to the back, you can see that the two, two thousand twenty-four year-end funding uh, was just a little less than seven point one, uh, million dollars. We've already, uh, approved the Whiston Churchill repairs. As you noticed, the road is open, um, at one point two. We've already approved the purchase at, um, one one zero one Maplewood Drive. We approve, we approved the CSA funding, and so Councilor Pelham, that amount was updated for, from you, for you last week at one oh eight. Remember I had four fifty there. The state take, take care of seventy-five, seventy-six percent, and the city is responsible for the remainder, and so that one oh eight is what the city is responsible for.
Have, have you ever, have you seen those funds replenished and out?
A- as CSA bills, it, it's.
I know they, we pay, and then they pay us back.
Yes, and they pay us back.
So, what I'm saying is.
They have not all came in yet at this time. Okay, and so we approved the, uh, search, uh, legal search firm for fifty-one thousand, thousand for us to search for, um, an attorney. Um, as you know, it's been five months. We've only had two applicants for an attorney. And so the new strategy is to, um, hopefully, get a search firm to, to help us, uh, pursue, uh, some candidates as quickly as we can. And then the Commonwealth Attorney, uh, petitioned the council at the last meeting for a cold case attorney, and we will be funding that at half-year cost, because that grant is expect, expected to expire in December. And so if you turn back over to the front part, you'll see half-year cost at seven, uh, five nine nine four. And we expect the Commonwealth Attorney to bill, um, that full-time cost into its budget. The remaining of the items, items here are for, uh, council's consideration as to whether or not they would like to, um, any other projects, um, um, to be funded. But that leaves the city with five point five million dollars, and as we get into.
Wait a minute. So, okay, so we subtract these expenditures, we still have five point five million?
You still have five point five, but your second question I'm about to get into, which was, you had asked about the schools, whether or not they.
Right, they have the grant money.
Whether or not they had grant findings that they could pay for those do, uh, for the Munis ERP.
Right.
Okay, and so the answer to your question is that the six point five million dollars that school, um, received in grants throughout the entire year, uh, all that money is for either year-round schooling, schooling, or for personnel. And we verified, um, and, and Stacy, I think, did the ver- verify, we verified whether those dollars could be used in any way for any kind of tech, technology.
Technology, nothing for technology.
Not for technology, as far as to keep the school, any, anything they need to support year-round school, school.
Technology they need.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying what we learned from looking into the grant. And so, you know, it, it now becomes whether or not council wants to invest the three sixty at three, thirty thousand a month, which is on the front sheet, Hopewell Implementation School, for twelve months, um, at three sixteen, to allow the Robert Bob group to implement Munis at thirty K a month. So that's, that's on the floor for council's consideration.
Robert Bob, he's not the Munis expert. Tyler is, right?
I'm sorry.
I thought Tyler.
Ty- Tyler Munis. They have project managers, yes, ma'am.
That's another person, though. Why would we go to a middleman when you go right to the source? I'm just saying, I'm just asking.
Listen, they came to council, they had this discussion with council about making sure, ensuring that the program was implemented correctly, and, 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 and council asked them to go away and generate a statement of work and what it would take for them to ensure that they have support in implementing the project. As of right now, they only have one individual at the school that's trying to implement an entire ERP system, and so we, we see, you know, just on the city's side, how that worked out. And, and so they came back with their proposal, their SOW, which the city asked them to do. Council asked them for that information. And so that's the presentation.
That was why they were here. Yeah, okay. I remember that.
Okay.
So, Dr. Maker, I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm, I'm going to transition into something different on the sheet. Um, on this request sheet, the things that we've already done, can you go ahead?
That's, that's on the back.
Right, I understand, but on this front part right here.
Want to take it off?
Yeah, just take it off.
Okay.
Uh, the things that we've already done. And then also, I think it would be really good for council to see an ROI column, uh, return on investment column, because, you know, even just playing with the calculator online, and I don't know what details Charles has for a loan, like for the Marina, but if you look at a six-year business loan over to the Marina at a six percent interest rate, I mean, you're looking at the city making a hundred thousand dollars right there. Um, and then that doesn't include, you know, additional, uh, money that's being made off of, um, personal property taxes, plus the, you know, the new income that comes in from those, uh, boat repair, or the new boats paying rent pays, uh, for that loan. Um, so, yeah. You charge, yeah, you're, you loan money out to this enterprise fund of, of the Marina, and then it pays itself back, you know, over time.
But I don't think we can get the six percent given.
We're like, we're, you're making the loan to yourself.
Oh, man.
I mean, we can make the.
Law for what?
Yeah, I mean, we can make the percent what we want, you know, as long as it flushes, comes out even. But, I mean, I don't know what his details are on that, but I think it would be good to see that. I think it would be good to see, you know, average personal property values, and I'm sure Ms. Reason, you probably have that on what, you know, some average boats are that we could get for, um, for estimating. I mean, I'd like to see that, because I think that that'd be something that we could end up, you know, making some money off of, and, you know, pay for some smaller capital projects down the road, and, and be, you know, a little small revenue stream to the city. Um, yeah, and, you know, the school implementation, I mean, I know that that one stinks, but, you know, I'd much rather pay three hundred and sixty thousand dollars now, uh, you know, for this implementation, than to have to have them, or Alvarez and Marcel, or one of them come back ten years from now, because they didn't do a good launch, like the city didn't do a good launch, and we have to pay another two point seven million dollars. Um.
This, uh, Sir Mayor, this, the implementation, is that what you were discussing, Dr. Maker, with the, uh, uh, Bob group, Bob Bob group, was this cost?
Yeah, it's, they, they sent the proposal, and I can re, you know, I can.
Who is they?
The Robert Bob group. I can re-mail the proposal out again, but the proposal came back at thirty K a month, um, and I just gave you an estimate of one year.
So now, like Councilor Pelham, wh- why are we, if, if the Tyler Munis has its own.
Project manager.
Team, huh?
Project manager. They do, yes.
Yeah, they have their own team that, I think, we looked at costs with them before. Have been bad on, I, I don't, I forget what the places are. Why, why don't we have the people who created this system come, why is that not a thing?
So Tyler Munis does, and when you purchase any kind of software from any vendor, not just Tyler Munis, they do come with their own project managers, their own implementation team.
Correct.
I, um, I think what the real issue is, is that they implement things on a generic basis. Um, they really have to get into knowing what your workflow is, knowing what your product is in order to ensure that things work properly. They can ensure that it's up and running and, and, you know, generically. Uh, I, I think that is why the Bob group is, 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 and, you know, saying, hey, we, first, the school is understaffed. They don't have the team to actually implement it, and they want to come in and be the team that actually make sure that they're working with Tyler to ensure that there's a successful implementation.
Is that going to be an agreement that we have written up? Because I, I would just hate to see from, you know, from now, that makes a lot of sense, but I would hate later on for them to come back and say, no, we didn't say that we was going to do that work. We were just going to train whoever the, the school had.
So, you know, I don't know if I'm asking for action today. I would ask if you guys look at the statement, statement of work and ask those questions to the Bob group as to what your level of expectation is and what you're requesting of them to do if you decide to go this route.
Do we have, do we have a copy? Do we have the statement we're hearing?
It's not with you tonight. I emailed it on Friday, but I'll re-note the statement.
I'm like, Mayor, I think it's important that, that, that we get those things done. I just want to make sure that if we're going to be paying a third party, that it's, it's going to be in there, that they're going to handle.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, when we implemented Munis, they had training people to train our people for s- they trained our people for so long, right? Were you here, that you were, you hear?
I was not hearing that.
Okay, so, and then they had, after they trained them, they had some other additional time that you could call and all that. You know how that works.
Yeah, yeah, that you know all the ask questions.
And then, you add one more thing, um, onto this request sheet. Um, I know it was something that we all talked about, and I think there was consensus on it, um, that, you know, as part of the policies, the draft policies for all the various reserve funds, like the unassigned fund balance, the budget stabilization fund of five percent, uh, the debt service, uh, capital reserve of three million, seeing those listed on here.
Okay.
And then, you know, the accompanying Dolly, where we current, yeah.
Yeah.
Where we currently are.
Yeah.
With filling those.
Yes.
And what we can do to, you know, add to it. I mean, I know we can't just go and one year fill it all up, like, you know, I think we would all like to do, but I think that was one thing that, um, Jimmy Sanderson made a comment about, was i- if you set the policy and you work towards achieving those goals, that's also seen very favorably.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, this would be a great step forward, uh, for us.
I can do that. That's a good, that's a good exercise for us to see. Um.
Good point.
So, before we get into the financial policies, um, are there any questions regarding?
Yeah. Do we need to have a policy about contracting? Was it, that, is that considered financial? Like when every five years, you go out to bid on contracts that we pay for?
That's in our procurement policy.
So that's, so it's not anything to do with funding?
It's in a, it's, no, it's a SOP, uh, am I, I think we created a SOP about, um, contracting and when we should go out to rebid.
Because that's been updated through this process?
Yes, through the, this entire updating of SOPs process.
Oh, um, Councilor Joyner, um, asked to be unmuted. Uh, she just sent me a text message. Councilor Joyner, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here now, thanks.
Okay.
Thanks. I, I wanted to weigh in on, to really sort of echo your, echo your comments, Mr. Mayor, about the Marina, um, about the, and I, I love the idea. Um, about the, and I, I love the idea of having the ROI down there. Um, I also wanted to speak to the schools um issue. There was, when though, as some of you may recall, um, they came to us that one evening. It was maybe a finance committee meeting, uh, that they came to us and there was some consensus about the fact that we would, you know, we would. Underwrite what they needed to, you know, to implement, because they were gonna try and, they were gonna try and do this. Implementation themselves, two people, two, you know, people that, you know, uh, Janelle. And I believe it's Jessica, were going to be doing this whole thing together and this is, you know, these Munis implementations are very complex. And so, um, councillor Denton and I attended some meetings, um, you know, we were sort of listening in. On, um, on the, these were, these were Tyler people. These were, you know, Adriana, who works for, for Tyler, was the one that came in and she actually um questioned them. On their work plan and so forth and so on, and then came back and I can tell you that, so, so even though, um. Uh, Heather Ness has sort of been facilitating, they are working directly with the Tyler Munis people, okay? Um, they're the ones that are gonna help them do that and those quotes came from Tyler Munis, all right? So, you know, you need to look at the whole package, but, um, uh, and also I don't think it's an ongoing. I think there's a, this, obviously they're talking about, you know, a monthly amount, but there's, there's, they can terminate that. If, if things are going well and they're making progress and that, they don't need them anymore, then adios amigos, you know, they don't have to stay with them. So it's not like it's a, they're locked in to a twelve-month program or whatever. And these, and according to the Tyler Munis people, the schools are doing a very good job so far of doing what needs to be done. But, you know, there is a lot of, you know, a lot of very meticulous, um, you know, activity that goes on when they transition. So I just wanted to, to convey that and I would echo the mayor's comments about, we don't want. We don't want an implementation that is not done professionally, that's the last thing we want. Because here we are trying to finally get them on Munis system so that, you know, we're very consistent and don't want it to, don't want it to be a failure. So, um, I think it's, it's a good investment. When you, you could do an ROI on that one and it could be an incredible ROI if you're really looking at what the implications would be of, of a bad implementation. So, I just wanted to weigh in on that and I also just wanted to say, I, I couldn't unmute myself and I wanted to, to tell the, um. To tell our CFO that it was a great presentation when she did her numbers and I wanted to thank the treasurer and also the commissioner of revenue. For, for being there this evening and doing such a good job of conveying this information to us, appreciate it, that's all, thank you.
All right, thank you councillor Joyner. Okay, uh, moving on to our financial policies.
So my question is, like on the procurement sheet, this is a SOP. And it says these policy procedures govern the use of P cards by city employees.
Yes, the city should have, uh, excuse me, I'm sorry ma'am, the city should have uh procurement policies. And there are also um SOPs that exist for procurement as far as internal processes. So there, there's two different things, you have the actual procurement policy and then you have SOP for the internal.
That, it don't make sense, it's just a statement.
Yeah.
State, the, the policy, the.
And they do, they do govern the use of the P cards for the city of, of Hopewell. So there are requirements that um sign and authority has to be done for the department.
Runs to that or somehow these policy procedures?
Yes, ma'am, oh, absolutely.
What, what policies, what procedures?
So you want them listed out?
And I want them listed, I just need at least a reference to something so people can understand where to go. To follow through with the actual policy and procedure.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, and, and the P cards, the purchase cards, right? Hate to be ignorant, but is that what that stand for, right?
The purchase card.
Purchase card, it's like a credit card.
Mm-hmm, city credit card, yes ma'am.
And, and who controls, all supervisors have to authenticate what their people are charging on these cards.
Yes, there is an actual system that exists that the, um, as charges being put, used on a credit card, they could be, they have to be put through the system. And then you have to reconcile the person, have to upload the receipts and reconcile the P card and then it goes to the manager for approval. And then also procurement monitors as well, what is being spent in, on the purchase, the P cards for the city.
If people charge lunches on these cards, is it possible?
It's possible to charge, um, so- sometimes you do run into some instances where there have been fraudulent charges on the credit cards. But procurement will send out that information to the, the purchase card user to let them know, hey, we, we see some fraudulent charges. To make sure we reconcile and get those cleaned up so that the city isn't held responsible for those. Now, the P card, uh, as far as them using it for lunch and stuff, if it's approved, then. If it's for a meeting for, for somebody in the city, then, or meeting.
Do y'all, uh, do y'all have a policy for that, use of that for lunches?
For lunches on a P card.
There is, let, let me just get with procurement to give you a list of what those policies are. Um, there should be a policy that tells you what you can use your card for, um.
I mean, do y'all ever just arbitrarily pull somebody's and just order it to see?
Yes, ma'am.
We do that all the time, yes.
There's no expense, uh, can exceed the council set appropriation limit, is that for the purchase card or is that talking about the whole budget? On the budget policy card?
Oh, budget policy. So they're talking about once the budget has been adopted, the appropriation for each expense. They're saying that no expense can exceed what was adopted by council.
So, so, I forget who it was, but somebody was in here, I think it was when, um, what's his name? Public Finance Officer, Mr. Terry, they were talking about, like there were, yeah, Russ too, he was, I think he was in a meeting with us. Telling us, like something came up and we were in closed session, like, well, how did y'all make that decision without council making that decision? If it wasn't in the budget and we were told, well, there was this leeway that they could sort of do that. Like for instance, we just made an approval uh for some expenditures that wastewater had utilized without. Um, consent and then later on council approved it after the fact, so.
Yes, sir.
For stuff like that, is it gonna run into an issue here?
No, we, we should not run into an issue like that moving forward with the implementation of the financial policies. As well as changing the budget override password so that nobody has access to it anymore except for myself and another person. Um, there should not be any, any kind of over expenditures in the budget moving forward.
Six million dollars over.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Quite a lot.
Yeah.
So, that type of thing won't happen.
No, sir, it should not happen again and we're gonna be monitoring the budget as, even though I'm coming before council monthly doing, um, budget actions. I'm also gonna be presenting them quarterly as well.
So do we have some type of policy in place that we could authorize a, uh? Because if, if we have these in place, but there's an emergency, like, like the mayor said, uh. Wastewater had to utilize those funds, it's something that couldn't.
That's, I believe the policy now states that it has to come before council for council to approve over expenditure.
So what, what is the process if that is like an emergency with something like that, so if something came up?
Have emergencies council.
But I do believe Dr. Manker has authority for a certain amount of fund, over, yeah, she does.
Um, I only have a couple of questions uh on the policies, one, um, first one's on the capital improvement policy. Um, have we married the two CIPs for schools and for the city? That might not be a question necessarily for you, that might be more.
I mean, that's this budget coming forward.
Okay.
Um, in the twen- in twenty-six, they're gonna be married together.
Have we started any conversations?
We, we have.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, um. Yeah, so, for, we talked about last year, um, well, last budget cycle. Um, that we were going to combine the cities and the schools' capital improvement plans together. And all my question was, is have we done that yet or have we made any progress on that? Um, the other question is, and this may, this may be a question for you more, Ms. Jordan. For cities our size, do we, is, and, and I know the answer is yes, it's more advantageous to do more than a minimum. Of half a million dollars in capital improvements, but I know you've worked in localities that are, you know, smaller. Do you see that number as something that's comparable or something that we should be shooting for a little bit higher?
Um, I think starting off, five hundred thousand is a decent number, but I, I believe moving forward as we start to see how much surplus. We're able to have year over year, outside of what we're input, in the budget as well, the five hundred thousand dollars for capital improvement. The five hundred thousand dollars is supposed to go to the fund balance, then we can increase it as we go forward. The more surplus that the city starts to um build, we'll be able to adjust the financial policies as such. Cause we really should be reviewing these on a yearly basis to see where we stand, so we can make those changes as we see the figures come through.
Okay, all right, and then the other one that I had was on the utility side. Um, and this might be more of a question uh for the director down there, maybe y'all working together. Um, I know when Dicky Thompson was the director, uh, we did some number crunching a while ago. Um, for the sewer collection system uh maintenance plan, which is the, the manholes. Um, the lines themselves and it looked like at the current rate of which the city invests in. That it was like on a hundred-year replacement cycle, which, you know, was like super pitiful, I hate, I hate to say that. Um, but, um, you know, something that, you know, each year we tried to do, but, you know, get it improved. Um, but we just never, you know, had a whole lot of uh support, you know, behind it. Um, at the, you know, commission level more, I think than anything else, but at. Maybe, you know, looking at what it would be like to get the collection system on like a thirty-year. Replacement plan, um, and maybe that's what we need to do, um, you know, building the maintenance plan from there. We just set a goal that, you know, we're going to every thirty years, you know, if you put a, a new, you know, sewer manhole in. Or you lay some new lateral, the goal is, you know, within thirty years, it's gonna get replaced. Um, I think that'll end up preventing a lot of, you know, issues that we have, like, you know, the sink holes and, um, some other things. But I, I just, I think that would be a really good goal to shoot for and, you know, we might have to be kind of be like the, the half million dollar capital plan. We might have to smart, start somewhere else like a fifty, but work our way towards a, a thirty. Um, and do you know for the sewer rate stabilization reserve, um, what dollar amount that should be?
I wanna say it's two million?
Okay.
I think, um, I have the information on my desk, I can send it to Dr. Manker to have him send out to you.
Okay, may, and maybe add that one also onto, um, the list, Dr. Manker. Yeah, sewer rate stabilization reserve. Um, it's on the utility slide, but the other, um, ones that we were, I was asking about earlier, the reserve ones. It's on the reserve slide where there's uh three different funds. So, if we add all four of those on here, we could have a better picture, I think, of what we're working with. Um, cause I knew we had to take, I think, some of the money on there to replace a pump station over on, um. I think it was off Queen Anne Street because it was on life support. Um, and I, and I believe the city has, you know, done a, a commitment to a, a repayment plan back to replenishing that fund. Um, I just can't remember if, you know, there was talk about, was, um, or discussions about, you know, raising it. You know, due to inflationary costs or anything like that, but I think that'd be something, you know, good to know and look at. Is there anyone else that has any questions? Okay, all right, well, thank you guys very much. Is there a motion to adjourn? Okay, a motion's been made by councillor Holloway, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed, here are none, meeting's been adjourned.